I will go ahead and call the meeting to order. I have a clerk to call, roll please.
Dr. Ramona Becker.
Here.
Guy McDonald.
Here.
Betty Martin.
Here.
Peggy O'Donnell.
Here.
Diane Nguyen.
Here.
We have Coram Mayor.
Wonderful, thank you so much. And with all meetings, we'll open this one up with a moment of silent prayer. If you'll bow your head. Amen. Now please rise and join in the sainted pledge allegiance to the American flag. My pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for I have, or I'm not aware of any additional agenda items. Now moving to our first action item, which is the consent agenda, which simply consists of the minutes of our last meeting on January 19th.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. O'Donnell.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Are there any questions or comments? Call in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's a pass. Second item is, for approval, is appropriations ordinance 16 dash 03 in the amount of $390,806.52. Anyone have any questions or comments on that? I would entertain a motion.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I have a question. I noticed we had to get new seat covers for one of the chargers, and I didn't think they were that old, and I just wondered why that was needed. I mean, what happened? Was it torn, or?
One of them was damaged.
I know one of them was damaged and had to be replaced. I'm not sure how it came to be damaged, but I can find out from the chief.
Because that was pretty expensive. I wonder, can we get something to protect them and avoid that from happening in the future?
I think it was an accident. I think something happened to it. It got damaged. I don't think it was normal wear and tear.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if there's no other questions, I would like to make a motion to approve appropriations ordinance 16 dash 03.
Second. First and second, are there any other questions or comments? Call for the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
City requested appearances is next. I have none. We'll open it up next to citizens concerned. If there's anyone wishing to address council. Seeing none, then I'm going to move into reports. And before we do that, I'm going to ask that Adam Cloyd join me at the podium up here. Adam, thank you for being here. Don't be shy. Adam has been here before. You've got like the sergeant, all those other initials around your name, and Adam presented a flag, as council might remember, not too long ago, over a year ago, that flew during one of the combat missions over Afghanistan. And appreciate you giving that to our community. He and his wife, Abra, and their family are all Bel Air residents. They have a daughter who's Northeast Magnet. If you see her in line at Dylan's, give her a hard time. She'll bag your groceries for you. And they have two other daughters who are in the Air National Guard.
And graduated from Heights.
Graduated from Heights, and then they have two boys as well. But we're here today just to say thank you to Adam. In January, he is also a, he says he's not a professional, but he is a professional photographer. He does a nice job, and as some of you know, portraits can be pretty expensive. And for the second time, and as many times that I've asked him, he came out and took portraits of the council members, which we need for different things, for our website, to hang on the wall, through other materials. So it gives me great pleasure to present the first 2016 Mayor's Community Care Certificate of Thanks to Adam Cloyd. So I want to thank you so much for doing that.
You're very welcome.
And I'll sign these. I didn't put today's date on. How's that sound? Let you have one for your records, and we'll give you another one here. Secondly, just as a small token of our thank you, just a little goodie basket, lots of chocolate in there. Share that with Abra. There's chocolate in there. So if you join me, thank you now. Again, thank you so much, and as some of you might recall, we started this kind of late last year, the Mayor's Community Cares Award. And again, I would just remind citizens listening at home, students listening, if there's someone who's kind of gone above and beyond to help our community, whether it's an individual or a group, would certainly appreciate you making that nomination. We'd love to recognize. This is something I hope just becomes infectious as we continue to do more and more for each other. But with that, I'll move into reports. I did want to let you know, fortunately it doesn't look like they are here tonight. I'm not sure what happened, but we'll definitely connect with them. We had a young man who was a seventh grader at Sunrise named Taylor Hoffman, who won the region award for the If I Were Mayor essay contest. There were over 1,600 of these entries received specifically from seventh graders across the state, and they had six regional winners. And I would, I don't know this for a fact, but I would venture to guess that our region was probably one of the largest and most. And to have someone going to a school here in Bel Air that won that award is something I'm extremely proud of, and hopefully we can recognize him in the near future at a meeting. We attended, and I hope council saw my monthly report where I talked about, last Wednesday was in Topeka at the Mayor's Association's meetings and met with a lot of county commissioners from across the state where this award was presented. Just pretty neat to say, and the winner from South Central Kansas, from the city of Bel Air, Sunrise, and mentioned his name. The entire class went up, which was pretty neat. He was the only one who, including somebody one in that area, that had his entire class that went to support him. Mayor Longwell came out and also joined me in congratulating him, since they're from this region. It was just a really, really neat, neat day. And like I said, I think if you guys have read that synopsis I kind of put together of what the, you guys all know what the LKM is tackling this year. Also at those meetings, I do want to give a public shout out, I use that word, to our finance director, Michelle. I have misplaced his card, but the executive director of the League of Kansas Municipalities made it a point to, in front of the room, and specifically to me, to say how much he appreciated Michelle's work and dedication. There's a specific committee for taxes. I can't remember the exact title, because the card was with me at one point, I swear it was. But again, so where Bel Air was recognized twice, one for a student, one for an employee. And it just, one of those things where he walked away from the meetings, yes exhausted, but proud. Two other things, just to report to council. Another thing that I thought was pretty neat, again, with Sunrise High School, Christian High School, there were two, as you know, Wichita State has the Gore Scholarship, which is a very prestigious scholarship, and they went on, went on, down, went on, down. When it got down to the final 12, two of them came from Sunrise. One lived here in Bel Air. The only other school in the state that had one in the final 12 was the East High School Baccalaureate. And one actually moved on to the final six. They weren't the winner, but still, I thought that spoke volumes for the education level there to have two from our community nominated for that. So that is all of my report. Do you have a little bit, just to inform, to let council know, and certainly do this in a more formal way here soon, but the Mayor's Youth Council, through making some phone calls and talking with individuals, we don't have a ton of applications. It's not what I had hoped, so I'm thinking that we'll kind of really get that started in the summer. We do have a small group, and we'll certainly give those names to everybody, that hopefully we can start with that, something in the spring and move on. There is one who is a senior that goes to Northeast Magnet. Matter of fact, lives across the street from the high school. And so he seemed, obviously as a senior, he's not going to be able to be involved much beyond the next three months. So had extended invitation, if you wanted to attend a community development advisory meetings for that. Thought that'd be kind of neat. And I'm still working on names for the Community Development Committee. I do have two for sure that I'd like to put forth, but hopefully a couple more in the near future. That is the end of my report. But with that, we'll move on to council member reports. Can't remember which way it started last month.
You started, Betty.
Okay, so we start.
No, you started with her last time.
Flip a coin, ladies.
Just go with Ramona.
We'll start with Councilmember Becker then.
Okay. I'm used to being first because my name has always started with B, my last name. I just wanted to say, I was driving around looking for a couple of dogs that had gotten out in our neighborhood, not mine, but one of the neighbors', and I noticed a few more sold signs up there in Iron Gate, so that's real good news, and that was good to see. And it's wonderful to see all the building going on in the city. And I also know that one of my Realtor friends here in town sold a house over on Rodeo Drive in one day in this last month. So I think things are moving along pretty good in Bel Air as far as housing. I also wanted to mention, I think I saw on our website that the Chamber is going to host the Asian New Year's Open House for this month. And you have to RSVP for that, but if anybody's interested, this might be a good time to get involved, because they're going to have a traditional lion dance for their meeting. And I'm trying to find the date for that. Does anybody know?
The fifth.
The fifth? Okay. So has it already, what is today?
The second.
Okay, the second. Okay, so that's just in a couple of days. And I have seen that lion dance before, and that is worth going to. If anybody has time to do that and is interested in the Chamber, that's a wonderful celebration and a beautiful thing to see. I also just wanted to mention, I'm really looking forward to having our Bel Air booth at the home show, February 11th through the 14th. I understand we're going to have an enlarged booth this year, so we hope everybody can come out and visit our booth. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
I have no report, Mr. Mayor, and I normally try to talk to the city manager prior to the meeting, but I was unable to do so. So I have two questions, basically about our expenses. One, we have hollow metal door company, we spent $1,361. I was wondering what, why we needed to rekey the doors.
We had a staff member that had their key in their purse, and their purse got stolen.
Oh, okay, all right.
So we talked with the chief, and he thought that was probably a good idea.
Okay, my second question is, we're spending $28,479.50 for the evidence management system for the attorney general. I don't understand that. I mean, I know there's an answer, but I'd just like to hear what it is.
We had actually applied for a justice assistance grant through the state.
Justice assistance grant, okay.
And so that is actually being reimbursed by the state of Kansas.
Got you, okay. Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
Member O'Donnell?
Yes. I didn't get to go up, as I planned, on Wednesday to the legislative day. I had some things come up with our accreditation that I'm chairing, but I did go up on Thursday for a rally. I took some seniors, and I was able to talk to several of the legislators, and so that was really good. I met with some from the House and the Senate, and was able to talk to them about some things with Bel Air. So ended up being really fun and a good day, but I regret it. I didn't get to go up and see all those awards, but anyway, and that's all my report. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. Councilmember Nguyen?
Just a couple of things. The Bel Air Chamber is not really sponsoring that. Min Nguyen, who is the president of the Chamber, is having that on his own. But with Min being the president this year, you know, the Chamber's not very old around here. And so, you know, it was kind of bunched together and some things like that. And then a couple of years ago, we had a president who just sort of disappeared, you know, in the middle, moved away, but didn't really give us any notice that that was going to happen. So some of the planning and things had not been as thorough. And so that was what the last chamber meeting was all about. It was an open session talking about, what would you like the Chamber to do? How can we make it more relevant? How can we make it more fun as well? Because we, the Bel Air Chamber, will be hosting another one of the mixed mixers, inviting Park City, Keatrim, Mays, Valley Center, you know, kind of a big mishmash of all the North Enders. The date has not been set on that yet, but we will host that kind of thing. So I just thought I would clear that up. And then I will also tell you that I attended the Park City Chamber this last week. And I'm known for that. I belong to the Derby Chamber. I belong to the Park City Chamber, so you may find me in any part of the county at some chamber meeting. But there were several things that happened at that meeting, and I will share those at our next chamber meeting. But one of the things that got me thinking is, is that they're a little more mature, but they have a number of committees coming out of the Chamber. And they have what they call the Pride Committee, which you can get funds for from, you know, someplace. And their whole purpose in being is the betterment of the community. They do some fundraisers, they do a food pantry, and that came up in the Community Development Committee at one point in time. I haven't forgotten it, anybody, kind of thing. And that was over an incident that had happened here in Bel Air, where the police had found someone who was in dire straits. And it's not really up to the police department, it's up to us, the community, to take care of that. But it got me thinking that there are things and ways. I know it's tough to fill committees, especially the boring committees that have to do with the city, but maybe we can farm some of those out into smaller types of things. So that just came out of listening to them talk, listening to a different city talk about things. So I thought I'd pass that on. And that's the end. I've talked way more than I should have.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Marfa?
Well, last Thursday, I attended, as an alternate, I went to the CCUA meeting. It's now being held in Park City in the library. They have a very nice library, by the way. And also, this is February, and Dr. Becker or the mayor might want to check with, wasn't the community development working on a community garden?
Yes. Yeah.
Has that just dropped out of sight?
No, it's definitely being discussed.
Okay. Because this is February, and if we want something by spring or summer, they need to.
Just to let folks know, we had, and Councilmember Becker wants to jump in, that topic came up. We thought we had a lot of things in place. It turned out that our first choice probably is not going to work out, but that, I'll just speak for the committee, that has not deterred us. I think a lot of folks are still determined that we will find that, it's just going to happen.
And we might just put it out there, if anybody is interested in working on that, we would certainly welcome your help. And that takes a community to do that. It takes people that are really interested and dedicated to that purpose, and it's a very rewarding, worthwhile project to do. So we hope that anybody interested will get in touch with us here at City Hall.
Okay, then, I don't know, last week or middle of the week before, I noticed that one of our signs on Woodlawn for the children crossing is put up, and I know it's really cold out there to get the other one up, but it looked really nice. So I'm anxious to see the striping go across the street and that kind of stuff for the crosswalk into the Bel Air Park. It's at the corner of Odessa, and down by the other, second sign would be close to 44th Street.
And again, this is something where we had hoped to have a full-fledged crosswalk, but then learned that they're way more involved. It's not a matter of us just being able to do that there. So we, yeah, certainly this way was having a, putting up signs there, and I'll just echo Councilmember Martin's comments. I'm excited to see that, certainly. I live on Odessa, so I mean, I see kids all the time.
We could keep adding each year.
Yeah, thank you so much. That will turn it over to City Manager Ty Lacher.
Mr. Mayor, well, I'll expand a little bit on the thing Mrs. Becker brought up about the Chamber member, it's Min Nguyen, and he's with Edward Jones. And he's in the strip mall that's just, it's beyond the west, or east side of Woodlawn, just north of Sonic. And so if anybody wants to go, it's a neat thing, he's going to host, and so I'm sure anybody's welcome to go. It starts at like 3:00, and I think it goes to 5:00. And the dance is going to be at like 4:30. So if people are driving along, they see that, but he's invited anybody and everybody to go, and it was just sent out with our Chamber stuff. So if anybody's watching at home or anything that'd like to go, just call them down there and tell them, because I think they're going to have traditional food and stuff, too, so.
Worse, this is going to be hell.
He's got, I think it's just in the parking lot there.
Down there at his place?
Mm-hmm, at his place there. And like I said, it's kind of a come and go.
It's really a beautiful dance, especially if you have children that would enjoy seeing something like that. It's a cultural experience.
Yep.
Really beautiful.
So it's this Friday from 3:00 to 5:00, and the dance is actually at 4:30. So like I said, I'm sure he'd be happy to have anybody and everybody that would like to come and see that. So let him know, it's, again, it's Edward Jones, it's Min Nguyen at Edwards Jones. And then we're also, the home show is coming up, like Mrs. Becker stated. We've got some volunteers, but we still need more. So if anybody's interested in working, as most of the councils already signed up, but we still have open slots, so if anybody, if you know of anybody that's interested in working, let us know. We're putting together the calendar for that. And then the last item was a question that Mr. McDonald had heard from a citizen about our water tower, and it was a good question. And so I thought, you know, maybe I'll just share that at the council meeting so citizens at home could hear the answer, and we're putting together a PDA about this as well. The question was, if this water tower up here at 53rd and Woodlawn, it looks like it's dirty underneath of it. And so the question was, well, what is that, and why is that dirty? And so what happens is, when the water tower is built, it's kind of a bulb shape, and so the bottom of it doesn't always get sun. And so the, so there's a shadow oftentimes around the bottom portion of it, because the sun never hits that. And the water tower, that one up there will hold a million gallons, and so we typically try to keep it in the neighborhood of half a million to three quarters of a million full, because we want it to turn over, because chlorine has a certain life period that it's good for, so you want the tanks to turn over, so you're always getting clean water or chlorinated water in there. But it hovers around 55 degrees is the temperature of the water in the water tower. So during the summer, because the water tower, water in the water tower is so cold, it sweats on the outside. And so that water then sits there in the shade, and it can get mildew on the outside, which makes it look dirty. It doesn't, it doesn't have any negative impact on the water or the tower, but it looks bad. And so really, the only option you have is to hire a company to go out and clean the outside of it. And we usually paint our towers every 10 years, and, you know, you get new, good new paint. It won't, like, if you've seen the one over by Sunrise, it's not doing that, because it just got repainted about five years ago, so the paint's in great shape and stuff like that. So that's what it is. It's just mildew that gets on the outside, that turns that color, doesn't cause any problems with the water. Our tanks, KDHQ requires us to clean them, and so every year, we empty the tanks out, and we have a company that comes in and desanitizes them and those types of things. So it was a great question, and I'm sure a lot of people have noticed that, so I wanted to share that here, and we'll get it out on social media as well. But that's why it looks a little darker on the bottom, is because, and it's going to be painted here probably in the next three, four years. We had a 10-year contract for our Sunrise, the one at Sunrise, and at the end of 10 years, then we'll repaint this one and do that, so. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you so much.
Mayor, may I say one more thing?
Yeah.
I just want to put another plug in for the Bel Air Twitter feed. If you want to know what's going on in Bel Air, you should really subscribe to the Twitter feed for Bel Air, because they're doing an excellent job of getting out information about what's going on in town, when we had the water main break and all of that kind of thing. If you were driving down the street and wondered what was going on, all you need to do is just get on our Twitter feed, and you'll know all about it. So they really got a lot of tweets out this week, and I enjoy keeping track of all that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Is that information placed anyplace else? Because I don't Twitter.
Yeah, there's several.
I'm lucky to get the computer on.
Several avenues that we use with traditional, you know, through, you know, website, TV station, to have it up here at City Hall. But mainly with, and that was one of the things, too, and I think I put that in my report, too, you know, the LKM, and we heard from, oh, probably half a dozen legislatures, and two of them, actually three of them spoke specifically on how they want to hear from cities, and they all said, text us. That is where it is now, because they're always on their tablets or smart devices, the mobile devices, that is the way. devices, that is the way everything's going. So certainly, we're gonna rely, I would imagine, on, and of course, I'm speaking here without checking anything with that, but yeah, I mean, Twitter and Facebook and on the website would probably be the fastest way to get it out. You know, certainly, we could, you know, send out media advisories if they let the news know for that. But I do appreciate it. Councilmember Becker, yes, saying it's a good way to follow people through, that's...
And anybody who has a smartphone can just download the Twitter app, and they, and just subscribe to Biller's tweets, and they come right through, and it's really, keeps you up to date on the city's news.
And before we know it, Councilmember Martin's gonna be tweeting every 30 minutes about something. I just know it, right?
No, because somebody called me and said that statements that was made by the council is on Twitter now.
So, yeah.
What we did, we tried something last, I think it was at the last meeting when Tristan was here. Tristan does our tweeting for us.
That was at the State of the City?
Yeah. And she was just tweeting along.
No, that was the council meeting, they told me.
Yeah, it was at the council meeting. So she was just tweeting along with, you know, like, you would approve something. So she would tweet that council approved this agreement or whatever. So it was just something that we were trying to just see if we'd get, you know, people watching us or not, and she was here. And that's what, that's what she was doing with the water main break. The staff, public works were letting her know, okay, you know, we've got it fixed, we gotta turn the water off, and then she'd tweet. And we'd put it on Facebook, too, but a lot of people follow us on Twitter. And what was happening is, the news media was actually retweeting. So, because we have Cake, and some of those TV stations follow us, and then they retweet it. Like when we had to shut the road down and stuff, they were retweeting that that road was closed and stuff, so. So that's a, that's a quick way. And then something else we're gonna start, we're gonna try and see, you know, a lot of the, just seeing if we get interest. It's amazing that, what we found, the types of articles that, or information you put on there, and who views what. And so that's, she's doing a lot of just testing to see, okay, what is everybody interested? What's everybody like? What's everybody watch? She's gonna do some, through the summer, once a month, she's gonna do a tweet along. So she's gonna go out and maybe spend an hour in the street sweeper, and take some pictures, take a video, talk about what they're doing, how much stuff they pick up. This week, actually, when they had to fix the fire hydrant yesterday, she was tweeting what they were doing, she was taking pictures and stuff. So we're just gonna try that and spend some time so that the public can see what it is that we're doing, what's our staff out doing. She'll ride with an officer, you know, and she's gonna go up and spend an hour with the SRO at the Northeast Magnet, just so citizens can see what it is that we do on a regular day, and take a few pictures and stuff. And we'll see if we get a good reception on that. We'll keep doing that, and...
Fantastic, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Good.
Before you move on, I did forget on my report that a week ago Monday, we had the fabulous city administrator bring a PowerPoint to the senior club luncheon. And he did a wonderful job. The seniors are still talking about all the information that they got that they never, because half of them can't see, to drive up here at night, and they watch it on Channel 7. But they're still talking about that PowerPoint. And so I'd really like to personally thank Ty for coming to that meeting. And some had to leave because they had doctor's appointments, so I didn't want him to think that, well, they're bored, they're leaving. But that wasn't the case. But you did very well, and thank you for going.
Thank you. Councilmember Wind?
Well, along the same road that we were talking about, I know right now, our app that we had for a while is kind of kaput, because the contract is over, and until we get the website up, then we'll get another one, is my understanding. But it was funny, because I received a message from the Derby Chamber just today, and they just got their first app. And they were, I mean, it was a big, you know, lots of exclamation points and things like that.
At the record show, we had one for about a year and a half before then.
Well, exactly, because we had had it for quite a while, you know. And I thought the same thing when it came through, it was just an email that came through, so.
Thank you so much. And then I just want to make one more comment on that, then we'll move on. But just again, yeah, hearing from legislators about saying that the best way is still texting for that instant messaging, you know, because they can't always check the email and everything. Another thing that I noticed this week was, with all of our meetings, not only are they broadcast live, they're on YouTube, and they're being sent out via the social media feeds and the Twitters and that. And the numbers are increasing, the folks that are watching, you know, several days later even, so we'll say hi to those. Did have one citizen actually that contacted and asked if maybe we could put the meeting date at the bottom as like a crawler for those meetings, so when they're played on replay, whereas on Channel 7, so they know which meeting date it is. I didn't know if that would be an instant fix. This probably isn't the best format to tell you that, but I'm just thinking about it, so that's what I'm doing. But, so again, that, so. Anything else before we move on to ordinances, resolutions, and final actions?
Uh-uh.
Okay. We have four items before council tonight. The first is a consideration of a revised developer's agreement with perfection signature properties, this is the LLC for the courtyards at Elk Creek. The developer has asked for just a couple of small changes to the original agreement dealing with fireplaces and utility connections. Staff is comfortable with those changes and had a couple additions to include as well, you know, dealing with building and drainage easements and clubhouse, you know, for the club and pool house. To me, when I read over all of these, it looks like the modifications are positive for both sides, a win-win, if you will, for both the city and for the developers. So that is ready for council's consideration tonight.
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Becker?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the revised developer's agreement for the courtyards at Elk Creek and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second?
First and second, are there any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Next is the approving the revised governing body vacancy policy. This is something that seems like we've been talking about for quite a while. I know it was reviewed at the December 17 workshop, where council wanted to make sure that it was put in writing that the mayor was gonna share the applicant names and information. And then we considered it again at our January 5 meeting and tabled it. So, but Charter Ordinance 17, that was approved at our last meeting, included, you know, a few of those changes that were incorporated into this policy. So I believe and I hope and believe it's now ready for council approval.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I noticed there were some other changes that were made to it. So I have some changes in wording I'd like to suggest, and I'll pass this around to the other council members, I have made an extra copy. Of course, the first two things we need to take care of are the amount of days, and under policy, the fourth line down, where it says 45 days, I'd like to suggest we replace that with 90 days in that place. And in the other place, we need to change the amount of days, is on the second page under, that's under policy two, I believe, no, under the selection process. Confirmation of replacement is the heading for that. I think we should replace the 30 days in that spot in B, under confirmation of replacement. Replace that with 120 days rather than 30, because that would give us the maximum amount of time, if that's okay, if we can do that. That way, we have more time to get in resumes, and then we have additional time to approve them there. If you think that would work out okay, may I ask the attorney if that would be logical?
I want, I want to give you a clear answer, but right at the second, I'm not sure, because I'm having to go back through my memory about what we put into the charter. And as I'm remembering in the charter, and this is my memory, is you were capped at 120 days. So whatever process you have, I think you're capped at 120.
Right.
And while I didn't work on breaking the days down, I think that the way they were breaking the days down, what was being discussed, is initially 45 days to get in the applications, then 30 days for the first review, thinking there might need to be time for additional reviews in case the first candidate failed. But they were thinking of ways to spread that 120, and it was just an idea, but however council wants to spread that 120, I think the only limitation you have is you're limited to exactly 120 by your charter.
Well, there's only two places in this policy where the days are mentioned, and that's why I thought possibly 90 days for that first reference in lieu of 45, and 120 days in the second reference in lieu of 30. Does anybody else have any thoughts on the number?
I would just say, first of all, I think we're adding a lot here. To me, I think 90 days just to get resumes is almost overkill. I would think in 45 days, we can get enough, and we've talked about this so many times, I thought that was the consensus of what the council wanted, that we had talked about, which is why it was in there, 45 days, because we had kind of come to that consensus at, twice at previous meetings. But again, the main thing is just that we have to have that person appointed within 120 days, which again, goes back to, you know, if we have 45 days to receive, it...
It gives us 45 days.
Right. It's still, you know, where's, could just give them, and if it hooed, I would think, a council, get someone in here...
That's three months.
You know, within, yeah, for three months to have a vacancy, you know, if we could do, you know, the 45 days, and our day...
120 days is four months, right?
I thought she said you could only have a total of 120 days.
You can.
That's it, yeah, that's...
That's what he's saying.
That's what I'm trying to say, that's the lid. So if we move that to 90, that only gives us then the 30 days, by law, that we have to, you know. I would ask that we leave it at the 45 days, and again, we can appoint someone on day 46 if we want, if council's in agreement.
Well, I agree, but I just thought maybe we should give people more time to apply. Maybe rather than 90, we could say 60 in that first instance there. 60 days for interested citizens to submit, because, and hopefully, we'll never have to use that many, but I think it's good just to give us that window of time.
Well, if you put it in, it would have to use at least 60. That's the other thing, too.
Oh, before we consider.
Right.
Yeah, that's a long time.
That's a real long time.
Because if, yeah, I mean, and we've got the caveat at the end, that if it comes like Mr. Sly, and you're almost ready for a new election, then it says that you can, you know, like, if it's within that timeframe. But I, that's 45 days, that's a month and a half if people want to get their application. I think that's plenty of time.
Well, whatever the council wants, that's okay. Okay, let's leave that at 45 days, and then change that second instance to 120 days, just so we won't be forced into having an election if nobody's chosen.
Right, I thought that's what we had, 45.
I don't understand there.
No, not in this document. It says within 30 days of the, of the, well, it says appointment, but it should say nomination. The council shall confirm.
If you appoint them in 40, like, on the 46th day, then according to this, you only have 30 days before they take the seat. The council has to agree on the appointment.
Exactly.
So you can discuss it.
Well, I was just, I was just wanting to give us the full amount of time that we put in the charter.
Right.
That's the reason I suggested changing it to 120.
I'd rather it be the 120 to discuss it, because you may not come to conclusions.
Okay, and that, we're, and then another small little grammatical thing, there's a comma in the, under policy that comes under there that shouldn't be there, that should be taken out. That's in the paragraph, the same paragraph where the 45 days for interested citizens to submit their resumes, there's a comma there that doesn't need to be there.
Under policy A?
Under polit, the third Roman numeral, policy.
Uh-huh, policy. And then, under identifying interested citizens, A, when a vacancy occurs, is that where you're at?
Yeah.
And this policy?
This is in the last sentence.
After policy, is that where you want the comma out?
No, it's in the last sentence, under A. It says for citizens to submit their resume.
Oh, yeah.
Or, there's an extra comma there that should be taken out.
Right.
Okay, that first page then is okay. Then on the second page, there's some terminology, I think we should go back to what was in the original, original policy. And that is on C, is the first instance where we need to make a change, in my opinion. The last part of that says that, it says, "The mayor shall share all information provided by each interested citizen with all council members and citizens in conformance with the Kansas Open Records Act." Well, I think we should delete that last part that says "and citizens in conformance with Kansas Open Records Act," because that's a given. If citizens want to see anything, they have to do that. And in my opinion, the council members shouldn't have to go through that process to give that material. It should be freely given to council members during this process.
But Councilmember Becker, I mean, this says that it's gonna be given freely, and then I think through the open meeting means that it, the names are spoken at a public meeting.
No.
For public record.
No.
Yeah, well, that's...
It says, "The mayor shall share all information provided by each interested citizen with all council members," and I think it should say, "in a timely manner before the council vote." So I think we should take out "and citizens in conformance with Kansas Open Records Act." And we should replace that with "in a timely manner before the council vote."
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Becker, can I ask you a question? Why would we want to take out, I think it's important for citizens to know we're transparent before the Kansas Open Records Act.
I think that's perfectly fine, yeah.
Why would we want to take that, those...
Because it wasn't in the policy originally, and it wasn't in there last time we looked at this and talked about it. And I just think, you know, the mayor is not going to go out and give this to all the citizens.
No, but I'm gonna mention them in a public meeting.
Yes, but you should give it to the council members without any...
It says he will.
Yeah, that's, that's...
Well, that's not what it says, so I'd like to have that changed. So rather than saying "and citizens in conformance with Kansas Open Records Act," because this, the way it's written, sounds like he's got to share it with both the council and the citizens in the same manner.
So you're wanting me to provide the names in a private meeting or an executive session? I'm confused here.
No, no, no. All information. It doesn't say the names. It says, "We're talking about the resumes and the information provided by each interested citizen." Now, I don't think they want their resumes to go out automatically to all the citizens.
I don't think you can give those out, can you?
I think it should go to council members, because we have to make a decision. You understand what I'm saying?
So take out citizens.
Take out the last part of that sentence and replace, take out "and citizens in conformance with Kansas Open Records Act," because they can get it if they want it. We don't need to state that in here, that's a given. But we should insert "in a timely manner before the council vote," okay? So that council members have a chance to see the material before council members have to vote on the nomination.
I thought he already said he had to give to us up here.
Yeah, within the...
Well, even if it's said someplace else, this needs to be correct and accurate.
May I ask a question, Mr. Mayor?
Please.
To our attorney, if we just took out "and citizens..." To our attorney, if we just took out "and citizens," because I understand what she's saying there, that he doesn't have to give to, do, you added this, right, the Kansas Open Records Act, so is it important that it's in there somewhere?
No, I just think that there was confusion, and Councilmember Martine just now asked the same question. I think there's perpetually confusion about what documents are and are not subject to open records, and when we were going through the last search, the documents that were submitted under the Open Records Act became open records, and we were struggling with that to make sure that we were protecting people's private information. But when anybody's applying for, not for a personnel position, but for appointed position, the discussion about the appointment must happen in an open meeting, and all documents submitted on their behalf automatically become open record, and everyone has access to them. So the reason I put that in there is because it was such a difficulty with the last, with the last appointment process. I don't expect that this is going to pop up again anytime soon, but if the next time someone looked at that, we were five years down the road, and it was, you know, five new council members, would we, you know, would they have to struggle with that again? Are we supposed to protect that information or is it in fact open? So basically, it was just a heads up to everybody, if you submit, and the other thing is, anyone who submits for this position is probably going to ask for a copy of this policy. I would. And it's a way to let them know as well.
That it's going to be out there for the public?
Anything you submit is available to the public. So it's kind of a way to educate a lot of people in a quick way. It's not intended to say that the council is the same as citizens or not the same, it's not that at all. It's a way of just making sure nobody's confused.
So we could just leave it the way it is? It would, yeah.
Well, that was my idea, but of course, council should do what council needs to do.
Right, absolutely, okay.
Well, I think, I think it makes it rather confusing, excuse me. Go ahead.
Well, you still have the floor, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, I, I think it's a given that people know they can get that from open records, and so I think it merges the water here, the way this is written. And I still think we should take out that last part of the sentence and replace it with the most important part to the council, which is "in a timely manner before the council And then, while you digest that, the next thing I'd like to change is the wording under confirmation of replacement. Under A, it says, "The mayor will name an appointment to the open council position." I'd like to go back to the wording we had in the original policy. Delete "name an appointment" and replace it with "recommend a replacement." And then, of course, in the B there, change the 30 days to 120 days, and instead of saying "appointment" in that one, delete the word "appointment" and replace with "vacancy" as it was in the original policy. And also, that first appointment should be replaced with "vacancy," and then the second appointment should be replaced with "recommended replacement." And then in C, this is mostly just changing the wording back to the original, rather than using the word "appointment." In C, I recommend that we say, rather than if the appointment, delete the word "appointment" and replace with "recommend," recommended, recommended replacement. And then in the next line, instead of saying "will appoint," say "will recommend," because that's what it is, this is just more accurate. And then in D again, the first sentence there, take the word "confirmation" out and replace that with "nomination." Now, I passed that around, and I think this just cleans it up and makes it more accurate. And so this is what I recommend that we would do with this wording.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Hal.
I'd like to ask a question of Councilwoman Becker. Could we, in that first instance where you want us to take out, and take out the Open Records Act, can we leave that and then add, and the mayor will give us the, give the council the information in a timely manner? Would that work for you?
I'd recommend, if we could leave that in there, but we should turn them around. We should make the sentence say, "The mayor shall share all information provided by each interested citizen with all council members in a timely manner before the council vote, period." And then you can say, "Citizens may request this information in con, in conformance with Kansas Open Records Act," and that would leave it in there for their information.
I have no problem with that.
That would be fine with me. But that way, they aren't the same sentence, making it confusing.
Ms. Martine, did you have a question before I asked?
No.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. We cannot remove that on the second page to 120 days. You're not going to have enough time to change that number on-
I think we agree, we're leaving the first one at 45, right?
Mm-hmm.
But she wants to change, under confirmation of replacement, you want to move it there to 120 days of the appointment on B, correct? You can't do that.
That would be the outside parameters, so just in case something happened, we didn't get to have a meeting, we didn't get, we didn't have a quorum or whatever, that the, that we would have that so we wouldn't be forced into an election.
Well, this is confirming it. This is a different thing, you can't add that on. It's 120 days total, so if you've got 45 days to get the nominations, then you can't have another 120 days to confirm it.
Oh, I see, because you're adding it on.
It's, you're adding it on.
Okay, so we would have to make it a total, so if we had 45 days, we'd have to make it a total of-
They would have to be confirmed before the 120 days expire.
Right, you can't add that on.
75 days.
Okay, let's change that to 75. Thank you for pointing that out.
And then, and then on E, this is for the attorney, remind me, on confirmation of appointment, on Charter Ordinance 17, because, and I apologize, I didn't look this up, but I want to make sure that I'm thinking of the right one, that that's where it says that they serve until the next election. Is that correct? Okay, I thought it was in my mind, but I wanted to be 100% sure. Okay.
You see, I didn't want that.
You can't, though, it's in our charter.
I know.
Oh, okay.
But that's the confusion, when we get all these charters and a bunch of ordinances, and then you don't have time to go through it. Because I specifically asked at that meeting if that was taken out, and I was told yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And now it's back in there.
What have, I, I'm sorry if I said that, because I, I don't know that, but since this is no hurry, I'm not sold, but I'm not necessarily not going to say I don't agree with you, Dr. Becker, on these, but I think I would like to table this and have this resent to us. It's hard, we've passed that, but it's hard for me to read through it, you know what I'm saying? And since we have enough time, I mean, no one is resigning tonight, I hope. I would just, well, no, I, I'm with Mr. McDonald on, I really want that Kansas Open Records Act left in there. I trust our, I trust our attorney, and-
It just needs to be-
That's fine, but I just would like to see this printed out again before I vote, because I'm not sure I agree with all the verbiage you're changing. I'm not saying I don't, but it's hard as I'm going through here.
Well, that's why I was surprised to see this verbiage changed, because I had never seen this before.
I neither.
And I think it should be like it was in the first-
Well, I think it's changed because we're constantly, every meeting, guys, we have other changes, we're talking about appointments versus recommendations.
It's just hard to change that many.
I mean, we're changing words that have the same meaning.
No, they don't.
Yes, they do, but we've talked about the same, the same, you know, the timing of this, again, yeah, we're not under the gun to approve this now, it's-
I'm fine with it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Would it be appropriate to, for Dr. Becker to give her changes to whoever changes this, and table it and give it back to us with the changes printed out for each council member at the next meeting?
If that's the will of the council. But, I mean, again, then we're going to vote on that, again, with these, you know, we're just changing words with very, very similar meanings, if not identical meanings.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, words are very important, and especially against the legal matters and policies, words are very important.
But our attorney wrote this, didn't she?
Yeah, I don't want to-
Could we, could we have this one and that side by side, so we can look and see if it really does make a difference, or if we can support that? I'm not saying I do or don't, but it's hard for me to say tonight.
I understand that, and that's why I brought along a copy for everybody to look at, because there are a lot of changes, and a lot of changes were made since the last time we talked about this without us talking about them. So I'm fine with that, yeah, that would be okay.
Okay.
But we'll get copies of, sorry, Mayor, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We'll get copies of this one plus the changes?
That she's proposing, but we're not saying we're doing them.
Yeah.
Right.
Just her suggestions, right?
But her, her suggestions that would be put over into this, and then we'll get another copy of this old one, because I've written all of her mine.
I'll be glad to provide a marked up copy, you know, the way that we usually mark things up, and a clean copy. And the only reason I, I'm saying anything about these is because this, we've never seen this before in this manner, and so there were a lot of changes made that we didn't discuss, and so I think it's very appropriate that we do consider these, and I'll be glad to provide anything that would be helpful for people to get a better understanding of what we're looking at here.
I just want to say, again, this is something that seems like we're making, in my opinion, we're making this a lot more difficult than we need to be, and that's because there's constant changes, and I appreciate our attorney writing something that we could all consider, you know, just back and forth, you know, we can do that and have that. I think there's a suggestion to table it, I think at this point, that's probably, that would be my suggestion, too, the most prudent thing to do at this point.
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Martine.
I make a motion to table the revised governing body policy as presented, and have the attorney, what do I want to say? Give us a, a copy of Dr. Beck, give us a copy of this with Dr. Becker's amendments in it, plus this copy that we have right now for the next meeting.
Sir?
We have a first and second, are there any questions or comments on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Aye. Sorry.
You made the motion.
Well, I still had to vote.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, so we don't do anything we're not supposed to do, I have a question. If we get this in our packet, so we don't have to keep dragging this on, and we have changes that we don't agree with or don't think would be best, if we send them to Allison with that, then she could send it back and forth, because we can't send, like, to all of us, we'd be breaking, you know what I'm saying?
If you could send everything to Ty-
And then he can send it on, okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Because there's a couple of words I don't agree with changing, but I, some of them I do.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think it should be discussed at the council meeting, so that everybody knows how everybody feels.
No, I'm not saying that, I'm saying, like, let's say next month, I mean, in two weeks we come back, and I say, I, this is not the word I want, and then we have to go through it all again, because we don't have a copy that other people think of words. Does that make sense?
Well, it makes sense, but I feel that's what I'm here for, to discuss this stuff and to get it out in the open. I don't care if it takes you six months to discuss it until everybody agrees with it.
Well, I agree that you're here to discuss it. I don't think I ever said that.
But, well, no, I'm not saying you said that. I'm saying that if you send her changes, nobody else is going to know what you felt that you wanted changed.
Mr. Mayor? You don't understand what I'm saying. I purposely asked how we could get it, that Ty would send it out to everyone.
But I already made the motion to table it, and she would give us the motion, the changes from Dr. Becker's stuff, plus she wouldn't have to retype this.
I, I think what, okay, I think what Councilmember McDonald is saying is, and then we come back to the next meeting, and we have Councilmember Becker's changes, and then we have somebody else has changes, so we're constantly going and going, trying to find a way to streamline all that, and I think we identified that, that they can be sent to our city manager, so that we're not breaking coma.
Right.
Is that?
Mr. Mayor, this is why this happened this time, when we got surprised with new wording in our policy that we had never discussed. And so it's going to be more complicated, which is perfectly fine, as long as the city manager would send that out to everybody, so we don't get any surprises again.
I think we, yeah, okay, let's move on to, next is consideration of an agreement for IT services. We do have two quotes that were received and moved forward for the all-inclusive IT support. You know, this is something that, you know, the city's been considering for, this is, again, something else we've been considering for several months now, and I would hope that, I think we owe it to our staff to, not to, you know, to do something here. A proposal was received from Cybertron, and council requested some additional proposals. Michelle spent a great deal of time contacting different companies to see if those could even, you know, give a proposal on that level and comparing all the services they offer. Again, this is something we've talked about so many different times, so would like to ask Michelle to share the results, you know, finally, there's obviously a price difference between the two companies. As you guys know, I feel there's also a service difference between the two. I've shared my concerns, and basically I want to invite Michelle up, and then we can see what the will of the council is.
Thank you, Mayor, for asking me to speak tonight. I know, council, you're probably all very familiar with this information, you've seen a few different updated versions of these reports over the last few months. What we wanted to do was kind of take the information from the staff reports that council's been seeing and put it in a format that everybody at home or who's watching the meeting later on can see, so they can understand how the decision was arrived of who ends up being selected tonight. It's a little small, but, the background, basically, between 2007 and 2013, the city had a different provider for IT services. We contracted out with a vendor. They were supposed to provide managed services, which includes antivirus and user support, all types of support if it goes down. What we found over the, over that time period is that the agreement we had was a limited number of hours, and an agreement like that put us in a position where we were only calling them if something broke. There was no incentive on their end to make sure things were working correctly or properly on the front end, because they would get paid more if they went over their hours. We got away from that model in 2013, we ended up going with a different provider, still contracting out, still for a limited number of hours. And what we ended up doing was bringing a staff member in-house for 2015. That position was vacated at the end of 2015, so we took a look at what would be the most cost-effective solution for the city moving forward. What we decided was we didn't want to go back to a model where we had only six or eight or 10 support hours a month, where the contractor was basically going to do better if things did not work. did not work. It doesn't allow us to budget very correctly. You can see between 2007 and 2013, we spent somewhere between $19,000 and $80,000 a year. Very different levels, depending on how much broke. So, when we, the last two years, we spent about $35,000 each year. Again, that was mostly responding to problems, not really being preventative. The thought with bringing somebody in-house was that we would have more preventative services. That person would also be able to do additional services like cable channel, website, things like that. When that position vacated, we took a look again at additional staff who we had and decided that if we went, we could contract out and save probably $20,000 a year, at least by bringing in a contractor and then having some of those additional dues pass on to existing staff. So, I did, as Mayor mentioned, we had a proposal from Cybertron in November. And we looked for additional proposals. I reached out to seven different companies. I got four quotes back. In evaluating those quotes, we wanted to make sure six main criteria were met. One is 24/7 response. We are a 24/7 agency, especially the police department. We can't have network interruptions, it doesn't matter what time it is. So, we need somebody that's available to help us, even if it's 3:00 a.m. on a Saturday. We wanted antivirus, malware, spamware, all of that included. Currently, we are paying for those separately. When we had a staff member, we're paying for those separately. A lot of those contracts are coming up for renewal. So, what we're looking for is a provider that will provide that included, so we don't have additional out-of-pocket costs for those things. We would like onsite and remote support for small issues. They can remote in and get it fixed. That's good enough. If we have a major crash, we want somebody here. We want 'em here pretty quickly. We do, again, want the all-inclusive flat rate billing so that we can budget effectively and so that there is more of a, or an incentive on their end to be proactive and fix things before they break, basically. Keep 'em running smooth. That lowers their cost. That's less time they have to send somebody out. We would like somebody with municipal experience, especially the police department. That acronym up there is KCJIS, that's the Kansas Criminal Justice Information Systems. It's a very thorough background check that everybody who has access to our network has to go through because we have police information on our network. So, we need a company that has already had that background check done on their staff, preferably more than one staff. And that way, we don't have to worry about if we have a crash, not being able to have somebody who has a clearance to come in. The four quotes that were provided, again, were evaluated on those criteria. There were two proposals that met all of those criteria. Those were from Cybertron International and OneSource Technologies. Because those two met all six of those criteria, they were evaluated further. So, those are the only two you're gonna hear about a little more. Just a quick compare and contrast, the two companies, Cybertron's located in Wichita. They have 16 technical staff members available 24/7. Two of them currently are cleared through KCJIS. They have more that are applicable, that can definitely pass the check, they just haven't done it yet. Almost all the city computers and new servers that we have were purchased from Cybertron between 2014 and 2015. They will provide pickup, drop-off, warranty repairs for any of those computers that we have, which is nice because then staff doesn't have to try to find time to drive them down to our location. The reason we became familiar with Cybertron, besides just ordering computers from them in 14 and 15, is our network crashed September 15th of 2015. They were called in, basically, to help us get back up and running. We, we needed some help, they came in. And they were onsite until we were back up and running and our emails were recovered and things like that. We did pay them $2,325 for that emergency support. Back when they initially gave us the quote in November, they were willing to waive that amount. Because the fiscal year was ending, we had to go ahead and pay it. They will credit that amount back to us in 2016 if we end up contracting with them. They will allow us to cancel the contract any, for any reason within 60 days. They cannot cancel on us unless we breach the contract somehow. They have a ticketing system where they can be notified of issues via phone, via email, or they have a little messaging system that they can put on every computer. So, anybody citywide can send them an email or send them a little message on their desktop saying, here's my problem, and they can respond directly to that person. The antivirus, anti-spam is included. Cybertron will take out our existing sonic walls, put their own in and monitor those. They normally charge a $3,900 onboarding fee. They're willing to waive that for the city. Their fee is $3,995 a month to serve all city locations. That includes the rec center and public works. That adds up to $47,940 a year, which should be about $45,615 after that credit. If we add additional computers with Cybertron, there's no cost. The example they gave was if we wanted to put in a senior lab, I'm sorry, a computer lab in the senior center, add 10 computers, the cost wouldn't go up. OneSource is located in Derby. They're also local. They have six technical staff members, one of whom is cleared through KCJIS and would be assigned to the city. If that person happened to be out or on vacation, they would have a backup available for us. The contract with them can be canceled by either party for any reason with 30 days' notice, which means that they can cancel on us too. They also have a ticketing system via phone or via email. The antivirus and anti-spam is included. They will go ahead and serve our existing sonic walls. They won't replace them like Cybertron. There's no onboarding fee with OneSource. Their fee is $3,300 a month, which adds up to $39,600 a year. However, there is an eighty-dollar additional fee per month per computer. So, if we add additional computers, it's an additional eighty dollars per month per computer. It's hard to see up there. It was in the council packet. I'll just talk about it a little bit for anybody listening. The biggest difference, and I think it's because of the difference in the size in these companies, is the response time guarantees. These are, these are what's called their uptime, their uptime response guarantee. From the time we have a critical incident to the time they will get us up and running. A priority one for both of these is when your network's down. About 90% or more users are affected and cannot access, kinda like the crash we had in September when everybody just stopped working. We can't take payments, the cops can't access their laptops, they can't get to CAD. We can't do anything, pretty much, until it's back up and running. Cybertron is guaranteed to respond within 15 minutes. OneSource is guaranteed to respond within one hour for a Level 2 response time, which is what they both consider significant degradation of service, about 50% of users being impacted. Cybertron will respond within 30 minutes. OneSource will respond within four hours. That may not seem like a long time, but when you have 38 staff members citywide who can't do anything, who can't serve customers until that's back up and running, seems like a lot longer. So, basically, the recommendation is for the city to enter into an agreement with either Cybertron or OneSource, to allow the city to have proactive network management with unlimited support hours and to allow for accurate, accurate budgeting and prevent unanticipated expenses with the flat fee billing. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions?
Yes, I have one. I have one. Did you define response time? And by that, I mean, you know, is that response just getting it on a ticket?
The response is the time it takes for them to contact us and then they have, it's a good question. There's actually different columns in here. The response time is the amount it takes for them to basically call whoever it is back, probably me or whoever else is assigned to be kinda the liaison if we have something major occur. That's the time it'll take for them to, to contact us and acknowledge the issue and assign somebody to fix it. The second column there is the resolution time. And for Cybertron, for those, those top two tiers where it's either total network failure, about 50% network failure, it just says that they will have staff dedicated until the issue's resolved. So, if it takes one, it takes two, they're gonna basically assign us designated staff who will not be pulled off-site until we are back up and running. For OneSource, it says the resolution time will be as soon as possible within their best effort.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I have a question. What do you mean by the escalation threshold in hours? Because there's a significant difference in that, in that, in that, in that column.
The way I interpret that is if it takes longer than that to fix, they can kick it up a notch to the next level and get some more attention on it.
That's what I thought also. But there, but there is a significant difference between Cybertron and OneSource. And, you know, there's two hours, two hours, and four hours, and four hours in, in OneSource, whereas in the Cybertron, there's two hours, eight hours, 72 hours, seven days, and 14 days.
For the escalation?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. I think a lot of that would also be dependent on staff and the priority we put on it. If, let's say, the one user who's impacted on the, you know, the bottom level where one person's having a problem, if that one person maybe works part-time, doesn't use her email very much, we're gonna let them keep that at a bottom level. If that one person happens to be the chief of police, we're probably gonna bump it up a few levels.
Mr. Mayor. So, if OneSource, if, if there's something that goes down, you said Cybertron would come pick it up, you guys have to take it down to OneSource?
Within their agreement, if it is something that's under a warranty with another provider, they will also provide that transportation as well, if it's a warranty issue. Even if it's with, Cybertron just happens to be who our computers come from. If it was a Hewlett-Packard or something.
Okay.
Both providers, let's say one of our Hewlett-Packard servers goes down, both providers would pick it up, send it to Hewlett-Packard, and then get it back to us.
Okay, I have a follow-up.
Mm-hmm.
Eighty-eight a month is quite a bit if we're going to add on, but if we don't, it's a moot point. So, do we have extra computers around that we might actually move into the senior centers? Is there something that we really are thinking about adding on more? So, we would know, or is that something we're not doing right now?
For the senior center, no, that was just a random example.
Or for anybody? I mean, are we thinking about adding more on? Because that's something we need to think about. If you say, well, yeah, you know, we're gonna be adding on eight to 10 more, I mean, you know, that could make a difference in our voting. So, I just wondered.
I know currently, we're having discussions just among staff about adding probably two, one for Jenny who's supposed to move over to the rec center. We wanna add one at her desk, since she's gonna be over there more. We would also like to add another one in the corner downstairs in that empty cubby, because she'll be over in this area still sometimes and she'll need to access her things. We haven't had full discussions about it since everything's kinda been up in the air. But those are two at least I know of. I'm not sure if other departments would like to add additional computers at this point.
Can I ask a question? So, adding those two additional computers, do we know how much more that will increase the price then?
She said eighty-eight.
Eighty-month, eighty-month.
Each computer.
I missed that.
Each computer's eighty dollars. Each, each network computer.
So, we go up an additional 160?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Correct.
May I ask? Yeah, Mr. Mayor. Does Jenny have a computer now?
We're hiring somebody to replace that front desk position, and Jenny's actually taking a new position.
So, she's never had her own computer?
No, she does currently, but we're hiring a person who's going to basically bump her out of her chair and take that computer. So, Jenny will need a new one.
Any other questions? Michelle, thank you so much for putting that kinda in the.
It's a great job.
Black and white for everybody. And again, this is something that we've been kicking around for quite a while. And where we saw the six criterias with the, going through all those different companies and to narrow it down to, to two companies that I think both are good companies. Like, so there's obviously a, a price difference. I think one could make an argument it's not as big of a price difference we'd originally thought, but, and there's certainly the, the service difference between the two. But certainly, we're just asking, what, what is the will of the council at this point regarding the IT support contract?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would like to know if they want to tell us they don't have to. But because they have to work with them day in, day out, and we do not, does staff have a recommendation for us? Or do you not want to say? I mean, I kinda would like to know, just because you guys are the ones that are gonna deal with this every day, and we are only gonna deal with it when we're on our tablets and getting the, do you have? Or if you don't want to say, you don't have to. But I'm just curious if you guys have a recommendation.
I think both companies met definitely the criteria we were looking for. The only thing I can say from our perspective is that we've already worked with Cybertron. They've come in, they've already repaired the network once, so we know, kinda, we've already seen them in action. So, I, but I don't know that that means OneSource couldn't do it. We just haven't had the experience with them. We're all, we are comfortable with Cybertron and we were happy with their, with their expertise and the way they were able to get us back up and running pretty quickly.
Okay, well, that's fair. I just.
And I would point out that both contracts come in under what we had budgeted for this.
Yeah.
So, that's, so, we're, we're in a win-win, guys.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
There is a significant difference in cost. I'm gonna call it $700 a month, which was roughly $8,400 a year. And so, if staff is comfortable with either one, I think I would be in favor of OneSource because of the price difference.
And, Mr. Mayor, and, and we do get, though, the $2,300 credit, right?
We'd be at $2,300.
So, this year, it would be just at $6,000.
You don't get it if you don't go with Cybertron.
Correct.
Wait, so, we'd end up, yeah, we would.
But we'd, we'd just be $6,000 over.
And I guess, and let me just ask.
With the response.
For clarification, Councilmember O'Donnell said with a difference of $700.
Roughly.
But, but it would be.
Six ninety-five.
But if we add, if we add those two at 160, I'm asking here, so are we talking now it's more of a difference and more like 500?
Five thirty-five.
Five thirty a month.
Mr. Mayor, did Cybertron give us a, a choice and say that if we added more computers, they wouldn't charge us anything?
Yes, that's exactly what they said.
For how long?
For the contract. So, if we add five more computers in the next year, the OneSource contract would increase.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
But wasn't the Cybertron contract for three years?
Yep.
Cybertron isn't, isn't as clear as a, it's not a per-device charge like OneSource. OneSource, if, if we dropped 20 devices, the, the cost would go down. If we add 20, the cost is gonna go up. Cybertron bases their price more on an end-user level. It's on our size and the number of users. So, unless we hire 10 or 15 more staff, which isn't going to happen, our price point won't change. That's how they base it, on the number of people that have to.
Sell 1,500 acres next year and these little staff, you little fag.
Mr. Mayor, but, but sometimes going into a longer agreement is better because we keep cost. And then you have the right to cancel. One was 30 days, one was 60 days. Both are very reasonable to me on a cancellation fee.
And I guess the other thing too is with the, you know, my thing was, you know, of course, I don't have a vote in this, but, but the big thing where it came down to me was the response time, the guaranteed response time, especially when it comes down to, to public safety.
Mr. Mayor.
And I'd like to finish my thought, but also was that we would get the, I'm just asking again for clarification. Cybertron would prevent, would bring in and provide two new cyber walls, firewalls where, did I, I'm just trying to take notes.
Our existing sonic wall devices, if we went with OneSource, they would just basically take over the management of them. If we go with Cybertron, they put brand-new ones in, and then they serve them as part of the contract. If for some reason we ended the contract with Cybertron, they would put our, our existing devices back in. And then whoever we go with would either provide new ones or we'd have to upgrade them or enter into our. have to upgrade them or enter into our own agreements, kind of like we have now.
Got you.
That's okay.
Councilmember Becker?
Mr. Mayor, when I met with Cybertron, I asked if, I noticed several things in the contract here that would be extra charges over the SEP fee. For instance, it says, "Should remediation efforts require more than 15 minutes, an incident fee of $100 will be assessed, which will include further remote, further remote work on-site, or work is necessary." In addition, an additional fee of $250 will be assessed for services not covered under this agreement. And it also says that they're gonna charge for anything that doesn't happen within regular work hours, which could definitely happen with the police department. So it's not just the amount that Councilmember McDonald said that would be the difference every month. There could also be quite a bit of additional fees.
That's under the heading of malware? Am I looking at the same thing you're looking at?
Yes.
That's if we have staff who basically completely violates our terms of use and downloads something that is harmful to our network.
Which, yeah.
So the way they explain it is, okay, somebody clicks on something accidentally, you get a virus, we'll come in, we'll clean it up, no big deal. That same person intentionally goes back to that same website, downloads that same thing after they've been instructed that this is harmful, then they're gonna charge us. And at that point, to me, that's a staff issue.
Yeah, that's what she's saying right now.
And if we, if we do have some costs, something like that, you're probably also going to see some repercussions for that. I don't think that's something we will run into frequently.
Well, that does occasionally happen, and especially things happening outside of business hours. And since I didn't get to go to the meeting with OneSource because I was helping a friend in the hospital at that time, I did check with OneSource and asked them if there would be any additional charges with their contract, like there are with the Cybertron, and they said, "No, there's going to be no additional charges." So I think that's a pretty significant difference. Thank you.
Mayor, I think you have a motion about a second.
Didn't you make a motion?
No, nobody made a motion.
No, I don't think so. No, no.
There's no motion. I said that I was in favor of OneSource because of the conversation that I had with them.
But I never asked for a motion.
But I did, I did not make a motion. No problem.
So there aren't any other questions, I would certainly entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah. Mr. McDonald?
I make a motion that we use OneSource as our IT manager.
Second?
Excuse me?
Give it to Ramona.
I have a first and second to accept a quote from OneSource.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to ask a question. Michelle, are you looking through to see if, you look like you were looking to see if you could answer that question from Dr. Becker before I vote?
I know the one for Cybertron.
Or comment, sorry, but she, she seemed to think there was some...
I'm not sure if, I don't know how that question was phrased to OneSource. They don't specifically address malware in their proposal.
I read about the other contract that you asked about in specific.
I would just, I'm not sure. Because it's not in their contract, I don't know honestly what the answer is. If we enter into the agreement, it's not specifically addressed, and the situation comes up, I'm not sure what will happen.
Well, that's why, that's why I asked the question specifically.
So we have a first and second. Are there any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Next is consideration of accepting a proposal for a new security entrance gate at the public workshop. The following quotes, you know, we received two of them. They are significantly different, but I would just like to say that safety of our staff and of our assets is an absolute priority for us. The current gate, if you see that, it's, sometimes it's gotten stuck where it's remained open, and it is in need of replacement. Staff would like to install an electric gate that will keep the shop secure when employees are not around. Like I said, we received these two bids. You know, this is one instance where I think staff is certainly comfortable with the, with the low bid, so if council is comfortable moving forward with an electric security gate for the shop, to me, it appears the low bid from American Fence Company would be appropriate.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion to accept the proposal from American Fence Company for a new security entrance gate at the public workshop, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second?
What am I gonna write down? Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to say I'm very happy to see this happening. I think it's much needed, and can't get it in there soon enough for me.
I am in complete agreement. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We do have a workshop scheduled for next week. Should tell you, the only council action form that I'm aware of is one that I actually had, that came from our Community Development Advisory Committee meeting, which I don't think will be ready for that, but wanted to see if there were issues that council wanted for that. But I have asked our city manager at this workshop, again, since we don't have any action forms, to give us an update on the marketing of Central Park. I'd like to just kind of see, you know, to me, especially with spring coming up, we entered into that contract. Two other things, and I've also asked that Brian Hayes attend, so that we can talk about the agreement of the rec center with area schools, that has been discussed quite a bit. And then also have asked Ann, our Director of Public Works, to update council on, you know, when we did our budget, you know, we approved and said you can buy these certain items, but again, we had a different public works, you know, person at that time, so she can come and just kind of, just again, to kind of prepare council, so we know what's coming down the pike well in advance for that. So those are the, the three things, you know, that I had for our next workshop, so I'd like to go ahead and have that workshop as scheduled.
Fine with me.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I suggest, since you've noted tonight how tired you are of quibbling about wording on this policy, maybe we should put that on the agenda, too, so that we could hear everything that people have to say about that.
I think that's a fine idea.
Yeah. I will be out of town, so I can't be here, but if you could record it.
Yeah, if you want to submit, okay. I think that's a fine idea. Councilmember Becker, I really do.
With the little...
Good place to talk about.
Yes. I don't know why I didn't think about that when you and I were going back and forth earlier on that, but, and I would like... But, and I would like...